So if all else fails, we need to put it on the, are you?
Okay. Okay, so we have more microphones, so we're gonna see if that works for, if all else fails, we're recording the Zoom and we can post that and connect it so folks can still see it. I guess the sound wasn't working very well at all for the live broadcast.
Okay, are there any corrections to the minutes from? I'm sorry, what was the date on that? It was June 8th, 2021. No, I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve amendments as written from June 8th, 2021.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Aye. That looks unanimous for those in attendance, right? Okay. Thanks, everybody. Are there any informational items from staff?
None of this time.
Okay, this is an opportunity to comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Because this is a hybrid meeting, we will accept comments via Zoom and in person. If you wish to comment and are attending the meeting on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature to indicate that you wish to make a comment. Or press star nine to, if you're connected to Zoom over the phone, to raise your hand. We will also check to see if there are any audience members who wish to attend in person.
Chair, there are no attendees here in person and there aren't any attendees via the Zoom either.
Okay. Then we'll move on to work session items. The work session tonight is to discuss draft code and map amendments developed to begin implementing actions of the comprehensive plan. Senior Planner Vera Colius will be, present the information for discussion. Vera?
All right, thanks very much, everyone. We are going to be discussing batch number two of code amendments tonight. And I do have a PowerPoint presentation and I'm gonna try to share my screen through the television. Just a second. It's a little, okay. It's like an eye test. Are folks able to see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
Good.
Great, thank you.
You can.
Listening very carefully.
It's not the presentation view.
Right, and that's what I'm trying to.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's, I've got two laptops that I'm working with here. Trying to.
It's like being a DJ.
A little bit, yeah. Okay. Let's see.
There we go.
There you go.
All right, great.
And this is the presenter view, so we get your slides.
Okay. Awesome. I'm gonna stop sharing for a second. I was afraid that was gonna happen. And slideshow, okay, let's do this. I can fix this. Hold on.
I think if you start the presentation first and then go into screen sharing, you'll have an easier time.
Okay. Hmm, yeah. Okay. So actually start the presentation first? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. But. All right. Yeah, but, oh, okay, I see. All right. Um, this one? Let's try this. See if this works. Does that look like it should? At this point?
It's still loading, yes, that's perfect.
Oh, wow.
Thank you.
Wow. Let me take this opportunity to thank the commissioners for their patience with the technology. It's really weird to be working off the television and all of these other things in here, so thank you, I appreciate it, thanks so much. Okay. So, let's see if we can, if I can advance the slides without. Yeah, that's why I don't like this. All right. Nope. This one? Yeah. It's not advancing for me. That's the problem. Yeah.
And we'll let you advance, but that's not what you're trying to do.
That's exactly what I'm trying to do. But because it's that screen, I don't even have a mouse here.
Can slide it, please.
No, this not, it's not that kind of a screen.
Can't just hit enter?
Yeah, it's not, it won't advance for me. Because of the way the sharing works. Ah, shoot. Yeah. I don't even know where the. There, okay, let's try this. Did it advance? There.
There you go.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. We're here to talk about the comprehensive plan implementation project, phase one. The goal of the project is to implement first phase of comprehensive plan policies related to housing, trees, and parking. Again, we have some policy mandates from the comprehensive plan for this project, which are to increase the supply of middle housing and provide housing choice throughout the city to increase the tree canopy and preserve existing trees, again, throughout the city, and to manage parking to enable middle housing and to protect trees. One of the things that we chatted about on Thursday, at Thursday's meeting, was just to kind of walk through a little bit or summarize the various public engagement activities that have happened as part of this project, which started in earnest last August. So we've been working on this project for about a year now, so far. And so as part of the public engagement, we had a comprehensive plan implementation committee made up of residents of the city, a volunteer committee. So we had nine meetings with CPIC, as we called them. We had two different project webpages that provided updates to the project. Those were the City of Milwaukee homepage or regular sort of webpage for the project. And then we used Engage Milwaukee, which is a community engagement platform that allowed us to do our open houses and post information, collect comments throughout the project. We did a monthly article in the Pilot Newsletter, which is mailed to all addresses within the city. We did stakeholder interviews last October with 32 different interviewees. And then we had our virtual open houses, both in English and in Spanish. And those virtual open houses on the Engage Milwaukee site also came with printed materials, all in English and in Spanish, so we had, and we wanted to make sure that we had the open house information in printed versions as well in case folks didn't have easy access to the internet. So we had translations for all of those items. We did community surveys as part of those open houses, again, in English and in Spanish. We did many email blasts and social media posts throughout the project to get folks to participate in our open houses or just to know about the project. Again, we had handouts, both in English and in Spanish, that we had available and continue to have available at the library, the farmer's market, at Hillside, we had those distributed to all the residents. At the Wichita Center, we included inserts in the meal baskets and boxes that they had there, as well as Northwest Housing Alternatives. We had NDA presentations with each of the NDAs a couple of times throughout the project. And then we had small group discussions in both Spanish and in English. And then, of course, we had our monthly updates at both the Planning Commission and the City Council to keep the project moving forward and letting folks know what was happening with the project. So we believe that we did a pretty good job, or I think we did a good job, of getting the word out about the project and making sure that folks knew what was happening. And that's just basically to date. Then we will still have our engagement that we will need to get the word out for the, for the public hearings when they begin in October. So we will have sort of a separate plan for getting the word out for the public hearings as well when those start with the Planning Commission in October.
And Vera, if you don't mind, just reach out for, just for a second, I just wanna let everybody know that we can't see the Zoom attendees.
Right.
So if anyone needs to, would like to speak, please just say hello, I would like to speak because we can't actually see anyone. Just wanted to make that clear. So if you have any questions, you're just gonna have to interrupt, I think. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, and I'll try to keep an eye for raised hands or any other commissioners trying to get your attention as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joseph, I appreciate that. Are there any questions about the public engagement piece of this so far? Anything about any of this? I kind of went through it pretty quickly, but we did quite a bit, I think. Okay. All right. So the code review schedule, on Thursday, we talked about the comprehensive plan and land use map, the zoning map, permitted uses, some of the definitions, we talked about parking, ADU review, and the design development standards that accompany ADUs. Tonight, we have on, as part of this batch two, flag lots and back lots, natural resources code, and Title 17 as it relates to land division. And then in a couple of weeks, I'll be back, we'll talk a little bit more about code, and we'll be talking about the tree code with Peter Passarelli, and we'll talk about design and development standards for middle housing. Okay. So we've discussed flag lots and back lots a couple of times with the commission. What you see here on the screen are some, are aerial photos with the neon blue outlining on the left the flag lots, so it's a lot that's actually shaped like a flag with a pole, so there's actual frontage as part of the parcel itself on a street. And on the right, you see what are considered back lots. So it's a landlocked parcel behind a lot, and you can see on that photo the driveways that access those lots, those are easements. So it's not actually part of the property itself, the, the access to the street, it's an easement over the front lot. And as we've discussed before, flag lots and back lots are an opportunity for more infill housing and, you know, what some might call quote unquote hidden density, because these houses are sort of tucked into the back and they're not visible from the street. We talked at a previous work session sort of about the history of flag lots in the city. And the code has kind of gone back and forth a bit about having standards that make flag lots a little bit easier to build and then how, and then that they're actually a little bit more difficult to build. And that has to do with some of the standards that have developed that we have currently in our code related to the width of the pole, how the minimum lot area is calculated, and the setbacks for the home that's in the back, that's actually on the flag lot. They are wider or larger than a standard lot in the same, in the same zone. So we wanted to talk a little bit about this. Some of the proposed language that was attached to the staff report is trying to get to this, this notion of incentivizing middle housing on these flag lots and back lots. And some of the ideas are to reduce the setbacks on the flag lots for middle housing, reducing it down to the front and the rear setbacks to 20 feet, as opposed to 30 feet, which it is now. And some, there are some other ideas about how to actually measure the minimum lots. Oh, sorry, we'll just kind of go to this right now. I forgot how my slides were set up, apologies. So one of the ideas for these incentives, or the idea was to, can we make development a little bit easier on these lots, but only for middle housing? That was something that we talked about. Is that a way to incentivize the development of middle housing on these flag lots and back lots? So one of the things that we wanted to talk about with the commission is, should we be, should we allow a smaller front yard setback for the, for the rear, for the rear lot? And that's something to think about, is the front setback one to reduce as opposed to, you know, the rear as well? You know, where's the yard that folks will really be enjoying on one of these back lots? It's generally the rear setback, that backyard. So it was something that we wanted to talk about with the commission. Should we allow a smaller front yard setback for the rear lot? Does, do folks have thoughts about this, or we can sort of continue through the, the slides for the flag lots and then I can unshare and then we can talk about the flag lots altogether, so.
I'm gonna.
Yeah, let's do that.
I'm sorry, I can't see anybody, so I'm just gonna interrupt here with my question, I apologize. Could you please explain for us one more time the definition of middle housing?
Oh, sure, of course, I'm sorry. Yes, the definition of middle housing, or the kinds of housing types that we are talking about are duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters, and townhouses. So that's, that's, those are the housing types that are under the umbrella for middle housing. Should we continue through the slides? Is that what, Chair Edge, is that what I understood?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Vera, Vera, this is Robert, one question.
Sure.
The idea, I think I heard from you, is that the, the residents of the, of the middle housing that's in the flag part of the flag lot, you expect them to, the thought being that the rear setback would be where they might enjoy, you know, more privacy in their, I'll call it for lack of better words, backyard. And, and then the front setback would be a shorter distance, ostensibly because you expect that they would not use that because there's another dwelling right in front of their house. Is that the thinking?
That's the thinking, correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that was.
So, you know, I, I started nodding my head and then I started thinking about, well, that would reduce the, the distance from the, what I'll call the original house, the original, you know, structure, that would reduce, I don't know, their buffer between that and the, and the house ostensibly, again, being their backyard. So, uh, that, that kind of sounds like a catch 22. Is, am I seeing that right?
You're right, that, that's the trade-off. Yes, that's exactly right, yep.
Okay.
Vera.
For that clarification.
Vera, if I may, though, there are rear setbacks that are in all the code that is 20 foot.
Correct.
Right, from the back of the house. So you could say, oh, it's taking away from the original house backyard, but technically by right, they only have 20 feet to where the next, next yard would start, so.
Right.
It's not really taking away their backyard, but it's just giving it more space to be able to fit something onto a lot, I think.
Yeah.
Does that make sense, Commissioner Massey?
Yeah, I understand your rationale, I'm just not sure that that translates into, you know, real world applicability, you know?
Well, what, what happens is, is that in all reality, if you were to build a regular house back there in a flag lot, you would have to cut that, the original house backlined at 20 foot anyways to be able to get your measurement to what is 30 foot now on a single-family dwelling. So you have to, if somebody wants to do something in their back lot of the original house, they would have to cut their yard at 20 foot setback anyways to get a line to measure from. If that makes sense.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
And those are just minimums.
Those are.
Those are minimums, you know?
Okay. And we can come, we can obviously circle back to this. The, one of the other ideas that we wanted to put forward was, again, to incentivize middle housing, was to allow the pole portion of a flag lot to count towards the minimum lot size calculation for the lot. Right now, the pole does not count towards minimum lot size. But one of the things that we wanted to explore was the idea of allowing the pole to actually count towards that lot size. Again, providing some more flexibility in creating lots in, in the back, or to be able to create flag lots. So sort of taking away that, or not needing to discount the flag pole area from the overall lot area for the flag lot. So that was the next key question to ask about. On that.
Chair Edge, if I may, if nobody else has their hand raised, I have a question on this.
Go ahead.
So I live on a flag lot and my pole is counted as the square footage of my lot.
So it, as far as, is it part of your lot? Of course it is. But the way our code is written, when you're establishing whether or not the flag lot meets the minimum lot size, the pole does not count towards that. So the portion of your property, or the flag portion of your property, needs to meet the minimum lot size without the pole.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That's, that's what we mean.
All right.
So, sorry, and I'm sorry if I wasn't clear in the, in the discussion. So the idea is that when calculating the minimum lot size for the flag lot, this, this idea or this question is about not counting or being able to count the pole towards that minimum lot size.
Which would generally get you about 300 square feet, I'm guessing.
It depends, yeah, on how deep the lot is, sure. And for, for some designs, it, it matters.
Right.
Not always, but sometimes it's sort of the, that's the deciding factor of whether or not a flag, a flag lot can be created without that area.
Okay.
That's the idea, yep.
Thank you.
Sure. And then one of, and then the next idea, again, as we've discussed before, was this idea of allowing back lots. Again, for middle housing, that these would be lots that could be created that wouldn't need the pole at all. They would essentially be a rear lot or a back lot that would be accessed via an easement across the front, the front portion, the front lot. So, and then, so allowing these kinds of lots, we don't allow these right now. And then also the idea of allowing back lots in new subdivisions. Currently, flag lots are prohibited in new subdivisions. These flag lots that you see on the screen right here are from the Cheragino Farms subdivision. It's a new subdivision, and back lots are permitted in new subdivisions in the county. So we have an example right now of a new development that incorporated back lots into their design and added essentially, well, from what you can see, these are the, there were, there are five back lots as part of this subdivision. So five additional lots were able to be created as part of this subdivision because back lots are permitted in the county. So the question from staff is, should we allow back lots in new subdivisions as part of, as part of our code amendments for back lots? And then, so that, those are the key questions for flag lots and back lots. I will note that we did, as part of this discussion, Commissioner Sherman is not able to attend tonight, but he did send substantial comments and questions about this particular topic and certainly, and related to community engagement and public outreach to, for folks that live on or live on lots that could be, could include flag lots and so on. We, staff has not done targeted outreach to properties that could include flag lots, we, we haven't done that. There are certainly a, a good number of them in the Ardenwald neighborhood based on that plat that we've shown as an example, but we haven't done a search of, or an analysis of every lot in the city that could be a flag lot. There are certainly more than just the ones that are obvious in Ardenwald, but staff has not done sort of that kind of targeted outreach, it's a fair question. And Commissioner Sherman included some, a link to some of the work that the City of Portland is doing with flag lots and back lots. I was not familiar with that, so I looked at that a little bit. I didn't have a ton of time yesterday afternoon to look at it, but there's some really good ideas in there. So it's, this is certainly something that we can explore. It's not something that we would have time to do effectively within this process where we are right now. So I think, I'd like to hear what the commissioners think about, about this and what you think we might do. Certainly, flag lots are allowed in our code right now. So what we, you know, if, if the idea is to do more targeted outreach, to pursue this idea of these flag lots, incentivizing, you know, ideas or back lots, we can certainly do that. We can just pull this piece of it out of the code amendments and tackle that as a, you know, as sort of a separate project and come back to that at another time when we've had more time to do that kind of outreach. That's fine. Sort of, you know, whatever the commission, you know, would like to, what kind of direction you'd like to give us on that. And Laura, I don't know if you had anything else to add to that, but that's, I mean, a lot of great points in there, certainly. So happy to talk about it.
Did you want to stop sharing for a minute so we can?
Before we stop sharing, can I have her flip the screen just back to, to where you showed the flag lot, right there?
This one, yep.
That picture is inaccurate, correct? That that driveway can't actually exist in that front house?
In the front house?
Yes, doesn't, if you have a flag lot, doesn't the access to the front, if the easement is in the back, doesn't the access to the other house have to be, not from the street, but from the pole?
Oh, so, yeah, generally, and this, this was a graphic solely for graphic purposes, so apologies for that. It shouldn't have been, it wasn't intended to show all of the things. Generally, our code wants those driveways to be combined, so you're right. It doesn't always work out, but yes.
I mean, I prefer that picture as code much more than I prefer the access off of the flag pole, but that's.
Right, so yes, good point, no, it's a good point, Commissioner Humor, thank you, yeah.
All right, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure I saw that and I just.
Yep, no, you're right, I picked that graphic solely to, as a general graphic, not for accuracy, so thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you.
No, you are right. Okay, let me stop sharing. So we can, let's see. Okay.
Did you want us to go through your questions in order, or?
However you'd like, I mean, we certainly can. There's sort of a bigger question about the outreach and that sort of thing as well, so, but that's, I can sort of leave that to you, but in order is fine, and then we can take Commissioner Sherman's comments as well, if that works for you folks, it doesn't need to be that, quite that rigid, if folks have things to say. So, whenever you'd like.
Okay, so before I open up the floor, or, you know, ask the other commissioners for questions, one question I had is about non-conforming uses. And, you know, the fact, what, what happens when, like the Cheragino Farms, where, you know, we, our code doesn't allow back lots, but then we annexed in new properties that are back lots? Obviously, they don't conform to our code. What, what challenges does that present to a landowner when, you know, maybe trying to do something, you know, with their lot in the future with the city when they have a non-conforming situation like that?
It's a good question. It's one of these interesting nuances of Oregon law, and I'm happy to have the city attorney jump in when I go too far off. But when this, and there's Oregon law that speaks specifically to this kind of a situation where something is, there's a subdivision or something is permitted in the county and then comes into the city. And those properties enjoy the county requirements and standards for 10 years. And then they kind of revert back to, to the city standards. So for 10 years, those properties, anything that happens on, to them, if they wanted to build an addition or something, they need to meet the standards of the county for 10 years. And then at that point, now, then they're, then they're city lots, and then they would just be considered pre-existing non-conforming. And, you know, they, they get to exist, certainly it's. it's, it's, it's a permitted lot, it was approved, certainly in, in the county and brought in. So, I'm not, I don't know that I can think off, off the top of my head what kind of challenges that would, would, would create. I mean, they, it's an existing lot that was permitted, and we've permitted, you know, building permits on them, of course, so, you know, we've gone along with all of that. But for 10 years, it's county standards. But if your question is sort of what happens in year 11 at that point, then it's, then we're reviewing those lots against our standards, understanding what the underlying, you know, code was that created them in the first place.
Sure, so like if they wanted to do an addition onto their house, you know, then we would at least, we would understand that, you know, they came in with a non-conforming situation, and if their two, if the side setback is too small compared to city code, we'd, you know, they can't get any closer, right?
Right, that's right, yep.
They could, they could do an addition inside, like, the building envelope for what the city would normally allow.
Correct, yes, yeah. Subject to lot coverage and, and all of those things, so, which the county has as well for, for those lots too, so, yeah.
Right.
I don't really have anything, I don't have really anything to add to, to what Vera said. I don't have my statute book in front of me, or I would give you a citation to the statute, but Vera's correct. When we, it, it's, these areas that are in our UGMA typically come in this way, where a developer starts to, the development process in the county. This is exactly what happened with Cheragino Farms. They then strike a deal to annex in, and they cover this statute. So they subdivided and did everything under the county process, and they enjoy that. They're really not what we would consider a non-conforming use, they're just developed under the county law. A traditional non-conform.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Are there any other questions right now, or comments from Vera about back lots or flight lots? Commissioner Humor, there you go, I see you now.
I'm sorry, I, I should have brought a sign with a yellow hand, so that you could see. So I...
That will be helpful, just keep that in mind.
Right, so, we have in our code right now that flag lots can be split in the back as long as it has a 35 width driveway, or pole.
25 for a single, 35 for a double.
Right, so in these back lots, what width of the driveway are we giving it?
Yeah, in the, the proposed code language that we included had for the back lots, um, let me go to my code, sorry, that the minimum for the back lots was 20 foot paved width, I think it was, let's see, where am I? The, the driveway serving a back lot has to have a minimum pavement width of 40 feet, maximum pavement width of 20 feet, and the easement for the access needs to be a minimum of six feet wider than the driveway throughout its entire length.
I'm sorry, say that, you said 30 feet?
So the, so there's your driveway, the actual driveway, paved driveway, and then the easement itself.
No, I understand that, but is it 20 feet or is it 30 feet?
It's not, it's, the pavement width is between 14 and 20 feet, the easement is six feet wider than that.
Okay, alright, so, this is where I get confused about this back lot and flag lot. Wha, wha, what is the difference between the two that you need to have a skinnier driveway than you do for a dual flag lot? It, it doesn't seem to make any sense.
Are you suggesting that the flag lot be narrower, then?
Or, or they at least be consistent?
Yeah, I mean, that, part of, part of the issue has been that, I mean, there's been some discussion that flag lots are difficult to, difficult to develop, right?
Right.
Because, because we have these 25 and 30 foot standards and, and 35 foot standards, so if the suggestion is that we narrow those up, the, I borrowed some of this back lot language from another community that allows back lots, and that seemed, that seemed to make sense, you know, and I covered it with the engineering, with the city engineer as well, but, but if the idea is to make them consistent, we can certainly do that. No, it's a good, it's a good point.
Yeah, so that, that's, that's when I was reading between this flag lot and these back lots, and I'm like, okay, well, what's really the difference between the two? And, and there really isn't a lot, except for the pole is owned by the front house versus the pole being owned by...
Right.
The back house. And so, the code should be consistent enough so that development can happen on both if the width of the driveway is a barrier.
Okay.
Right? Would be my feeling on that.
For sure. Yeah, you said that you looked at other communities to kind of see what language they used. I was just wondering, what other communities, and then kind of as a follow-up question slash comment, have you looked at, like, Seattle Metro? Because as far as, like, Portland Metro goes, which we very much are with the expansion and, and how many people have moved here, especially from out of state coming in, just increasing our population, especially Portland Metro condensed, Seattle did that 10, 20 years ago. And so I'm just wondering, like, have, have we really explored what phases they went through in their different codes to kind of account for so many people kind of moving into a city? I mean, they're just similar to us. So my first question being, like, what, what areas are you borrowing this code language from and, and looking at, and also is Seattle or someplace like that, have you looked there?
I have not looked at Seattle, so that's an easy one to answer, I did not. And when I put out some questions to the Oregon Planners listserv, so we have a listserv email address where you can just ask planners different questions, and this was one of the ones that we asked about when we were first in work sessions with the Planning Commission, you know, what were, and with the City Council, kind of what are the pros and cons, you know, to flag lots, back lots? I was asking different planners, you know, do you allow these? What are your standards? What has your experience been? So I looked at their code, so I was looking at Canby, the county, because I'm more familiar with their standards now, having reviewed Cheragino Farms, and I believe it was either, I think it was either Tigard or Wilsonville, it might have been Tigard, I think. So those planners got back to me and I looked at their codes, but I didn't do an exhaustive search of flag lot and back lot standards. And again, I can certainly do that, and look at other communities and how they've done them.
Not to add on to your plate or anything, I would just say that probably the smartest bet for us as a local community to look at is to find cities that were going through what we are going through right now 10, 20 years ago, and what directions and approaches they took, and what worked and what didn't work. And for me, I lived up and down, you know, Seattle for 10 years and watched it happen 20 years ago there, what's happening here now. And so a lot of their suburb communities from, from Seattle, just like ours, kind of exploded and became, you know, more densely populated. And so I think that's obviously the city that I go to first in my mind, because I directly experienced it for the last 20 years there, and watched the populate, I watched them do what Portland is doing. And so, so finding a community that would have been similar to ours 20, 15, 20 years ago, and seeing what they did, I think, would probably be beneficial to our community, because I, I, that's just what all of Portland Metro is doing right now, and it's probably gonna continue. It's probably gonna continue to be a challenge. I mean, we, we obviously have a little bit more challenges with, like, the prices of lumber and, and everything else going on, but everybody has their thing. But yeah, I'd just say, Seattle and different, different areas that have faced this kind of housing crisis and population explosion, like, we have seen what they did, and what worked and didn't work, you know, a decade or two ago would probably be helpful.
So Commissioner, are you referring specifically to, uh, flag lots and back lots, and how other cities have handled that? Because that's, okay.
Specifically, and then also, also kind of, it fits into a broad, broader conversation too.
Right, and I just, just to, we, the city of Milwaukee's been doing flag lots, I think, for a, a pretty good amount of time, as are a lot of other jurisdictions close by. So I'm not saying that we shouldn't look at it, I just think that we do have a lot of experience here in the region looking at this, and so I think we could look into a couple more places, but I just want to be careful not to add on a lot to Vera's workload at this point in time, just because we're in this kind of, this moment that we have to keep moving, but your advice is well taken, and we'll see if we can look at at least a couple of jurisdictions and see if they have any, what their standards are, and if they're radically different than ours, that would be good to know.
Yeah.
But I'd be surprised if they were, but we can at least look into a few.
I think you're right. I think it's kind of more of a broader, broader subject too. So not, so in addition to flag lots, as a broader, you know, broader subject, but yes, I agree. I don't want to add any more on to Vera's.
No, and if I could just jump in on that, because when Commissioner Sherman sent his comments, you know, he included a link to, you know, what Portland is doing, and they have a whole, they've got multiple layers of different things that they're doing. They have, you know, small lot, flag lots, that, you, you know, the, the neck or the pole can be extremely narrow, you know, if you actually don't even build a driveway. So there, they, they've added multiple layers onto their code requirements as well, and kind of not, not replicating Portland's code, that's not what I'm suggesting, but trying to see, you know, are there, is there room for some consistency within the region for what different communities are requiring to take a look at that? But I haven't had a chance to review it, you know, really carefully yet, so, but your point is well taken, you know, where, you know, where are there some models that we can take a look at beyond what I've already looked at? So, no, you're, you're not wrong on that, for sure, yeah.
Um, so I have, I have several comments or questions about the flight lots and back lots. The, I think, first off, in terms of the, the driveway width requirement and, you know, being consistent with the, the flag lots, I, I thought the intention here was to specifically allow a different approach that would allow more flexibility than the flag lot standards currently allow. And I don't know if that means that we should change the flag lot standards to match this, or if this was really deliberately intended to stand apart from the flag lots as, you know, a distinct approach that allowed for narrower driveways. So, um, the other thing that I was noticing when looking at the draft language is, um, you know, and I think we, we kind of, we kind of approached, we, we dealt with this same thing a little bit in the comp plan, uh, policy language. It just feels like there's this negative tone, you know, to the idea of flag lots and back lots, if you look at the protection of adjoining properties, you know, section. It strikes me as weird language in our code that we would say that a residential use on each side of a property line means that we have to protect one of those residents, residences from the other. I think that, I think privacy screening is a desirable amenity in its own right, and that we can simply have code that affirmatively requires privacy screening and sets standards for that, rather than making it sound like it's, you know, this detrimental use to the community that we have to protect the neighbors from. They're both residential uses on both sides, they're in the same zoning district, it, you know, it's housing. And so I don't think we need to protect housing from housing, and, and our code really sends a weird signal about that. So that was the, that's the thing I was thinking there. The other thing I'm wondering about is, I know that most of the lots in the city that we've been talking about, particularly, I think, in Ardenwall, as Commissioner Sherman pointed out, you know, sure, there's a lot of those that are basically in, you know, compliance with the general idea of city code, they're pretty close to front, you know, step back, you know, from the street, you got a big, deep backyard. But as the city, over the next 20 years, annexes additional parts of its urban services area, which, you know, can include some of those county lots that, you know, were developed historically, that might have the house set back the, you know, a long way from the street. And so the parent lot, which would be the single unit dwelling of the, of the, of a potential flag lot partition, the back lot could already be the one that exists and is a single unit dwelling, not middle housing. And then the front lot would be where we would want, you know, the middle housing. So I want to make sure that our code anticipates this scenario, and make sure that we're not creating non-conforming scenarios, you know, that, you know, I know we can't anticipate everything, but I don't want, I don't want a homeowner to have to jump through hoops to create middle housing and, you know, consistent with our policy, simply because, you know, we didn't anticipate a completely foreseeable scenario like annexing land in our UGMA. So, uh, I feel like our, the, the code should at least deliberately anticipate that scenario, perhaps, or at least help us understand, help me understand how the code is anticipating that scenario already, and I'll feel a little bit better about that. I think that's it as far as this part of the code that we're looking at today. I have more comments about, you know, the other stuff that we'll talk about in a few minutes, I think, but as far as the back lots and flight lots, you know, I really wasn't on board with the idea of flag lots when we began this process, but after, you know, talking this through, I've really come around on it. And I, you know, really appreciate the work that you guys are putting into this, you know, trying, I know it's been a sticky subject for the last, you know, generation or so here, not longer, and so I, I appreciate, you know, the effort that you're putting into approaching this, you know, sensitively. So thank you for that.
Your comments too, especially with the, the language with the neighboring housing versus housing, it kind of, it gave me clarity too.
Right, and, and that language is in there, because I was in, you know, involved with the city back when flag lots became this big, huge issue, and that language is in there deliberately, because the residents at the time really wanted to protect that front house, and make it harder to, you know, have flag lots, because they're afraid that everybody's privacy was going to be interrupted, and their lives were going to severely change because of that. So, I, I agree, there is a, a negative connotation that is kind of semi-written into that code, and it's, it's because the writers at the time wanted to make their point of privacy to the surrounding properties.
And we feel confident we can go ahead and take a look at that and try to erase that negative tone based on this conversation. Yeah, definitely.
No, it was a really good point to raise, Commissioner Edge. I, I think the, every time I read the code, I don't re, I know what the code says, and I hadn't thought about it that way. I just, you know, I look at flag lots and, you know, and just do, you know, use, interpret the regulations as they are, but it's a really good point to see kind of what the tone, as I, as you were reading it, I went through it, I realized, you're right, it's extremely negative, we should, let's, let's, let's take that down a little bit, I think. It's a good, it's a very good point, thank you for bringing that up.
Thanks, I, I appreciate that, and, you know, I think, I think that it'll, it, it could just be a little bit straighter, you know what I mean, is just, just plainer, plainer language, I think, rather than what it is, so.
I would agree.
Uh, anything else on flight lots or back lots before we move on? Okay, I think we're good, Vera.
All right. If, if I, and I don't mean to belabor the point, but can, can I ask about the commission's thoughts on Commissioner Sherman's email about what, how we should approach some targeted community outreach or public engagement? Are there thoughts about, you know, what sort of direction we, we ought to take on that? And it, I know he's not here, so I, that's, that's hard, but, yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner Edge, I'm just trying to figure out the, the flow here, or have we answered Vera's three or four questions? Vera, do you have an answer for those four questions?
I think, well, not, I mean, not specifically, I mean, is the general thought from the commission, the idea of how, how should we be handling the front yard setback, for example? You know, and, and you're right, so kind of a pointed, specific answer to the questions. I don't know that I have that, no.
Okay, so, Commissioner Edge... Before we move on, yeah, we can address those.
Yeah, but let me just, let me, let me go to, I, I do have a question, a question, a, a point of clarification on the, on the definitions, if I could go there. Is that appropriate at this point?
Sure.
Okay. So, when you look at, in the definitions, it's section three that says variances prohibited, variances of lot area, lot width, and lot depth standards are prohibited for flag lots. And it says the same thing for back, back lots a little bit further on. And so I understand what we're trying to do with standards, standards are standards. But at the same time, I'm also kind of skittish about never saying never because we, I, I, you know, do we have that much, you know, foresight that we can predict that there's not a need for a variance at some point?
Yeah, I tend to agree with you. I, 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 you know, I'm kind of trying to walk this, you know, balance this, this line between, you know, having some respect for really the, the real recent generation of, you know, feedback that we have from city residents on flag lots. And then this need to figure out how we can accommodate more housing, you know, in our existing residential areas. And so it's like, I, you know, I, I tend to agree. I feel like we need to allow for variances. But I feel like also that language was baked in there pretty deliberately. And so I'm certainly open to, you know, being softer on that and allowing variances. You know, I mean, they, they could be discretionary, you know, obviously coming through the planning commission, you know, types of variances. But, yeah, I'd rather, I'd rather it not be outright prohibited. Like, which I think is what you're suggesting as well, that maybe we allow a review process for, you know, dimensional variances in the flag lot.
You know, there, there's, you know, at some point, there may be a very good reason for it, for it. And I would just hate for us to be in another situation as we've been in the past, where, you know, kind of we're painted in to a corner by the code. And then we have to go out and do some, you know, point code change to take care of one little situation. So I, I understand standards and I understand what we're trying to achieve. But I just, I'm concerned that we're painting ourselves into a corner here.
Commissioner Hema or Commissioner Ert, do you have any feedback on that?
Uh, you know, it, once again, like I said, it was 15, 20 some odd years ago. And some of those people that are on the planning commission then are now on city council now. So it'll be interesting how that plays out. But I totally love flag lots. I, I think it's the only way they're going to be able to get the development that you want inside the city. And so, yeah, a little bit of variance is, I have, when, when we get together and we share a beer, I will tell you the story of why we needed a variance at my house, which caused me an extra six months in not being able to move in, because we had to figure out how to change the line to get my 30 feet from my front door. So, yeah, it, we should be allowed to have some variances in there. And I, I, I am really confused of why we need the distinct definition between the back lots and the, and the flag lots. I guess if it's because of the definition of who, who owns the driveway, then they, then it should exist that way. But I think they should be con, consistent with each other, because really they are just one and the same thing, except for who owns the driveway. And, and it, and it's kind of sad that, you know, hey, if you do a flag lot, you have to do improvements to the street. But if you do a back lot, you don't have to do any improvements to the street, which doesn't make any sense either, because then everybody's just going to call it a back lot. So why even have the flag lots?
So I have a question about that, actually. You, if you're partitioning out a new lot, that's a back lot, you still have frontage requirements, frontage improvement requirements for the parent lot, right?
I, I think the way this, the city engineer would need to determine sort of what's the proportional amount of improvements. For a flag lot, for example, it's literally the frontage of the flag lot that you're responsible for. I think the city engineer and the engineering department would have to come up with a way of how they were, how they would assess, you know, the proportionality. You're adding a, you're adding a dwelling unit. There would be improvements of some kind. I just don't know how the city engineer would be figuring it out. But I'm sure he would. So.
Wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be the same? I mean,
Probably.
Because it's the same use.
Yeah.
It's just owned by somebody different.
Right.
So it seems like it would be exactly the same.
It would likely be just, it would be that easement width, is my guess. But, you know, we'd have to determine that from this, from the city engineer. And I think, and if I could just sort of on all of this, on this notion, I, I think it's important, though, to re, to remember that without doing a flag lot, any one of these larger lots could still build middle housing in the backyard, right? They could still do a triplex or a quadplex and put additional units in the backyard. The difference here is how you can divide the lot. Can you put that, those units on their own parcel? And that's, that's the difference. So, you know, if we're, you know, if it's still, if it feels like we need to do, you know, more work on how we're sort of tweaking the, the actual flag lot, back lot standards, that's fine. I just kind of wanted to make sure everyone, including anyone watching at home, that without doing these things, you can still build in, in the backyard. It's just a way of creating addition, doing the partition itself. So I just wanted to make sure we weren't forgetting that part of it, I guess.
And then since I am a lover of flag lots, I don't know why we have to change. I, I, 20 feet actually makes sense because it's consistent with the code to the front, right? We haven't changed that, right?
Right. The setbacks, you mean?
Right.
Yep.
Right. So it's consistent with the house in the front. The 30 feet was written in to make it more difficult to put in a house. But I don't know why it can't be for single family dwellings as well. Why we can't change the whole thing for, because, let's face it, you're not going to get, what people use the term as a McMansion, whatever that means. But you can at least, you know, get, you know, maybe a 2,000 square foot house or 1,500 square foot house back there, even if it isn't considered middle home. But it's certainly much more affordable than a 3,000 square foot house.
Now, that, that was something that we, you know, as a, I'm interested to hear what the commission thinks about that. That, that was something that, you know, I thought we had talked about. But I'm happy to, you know, whatever direction the commission wants, can we, should we make the setbacks the, sort of the standard 20 for everybody, not just for middle housing? That's, it's a good question. Should we be continuing sort of this idea of incentivizing middle housing or not? That's.
Right. Because that was the idea behind it, was to incentivize middle housing.
Right.
To make it less.
Right.
Right.
And, and I think that that's, that's appropriate, given the policy context of the comprehensive plan. You know, the, Commissioner Sherman, I think, raised the same point, you know, why wouldn't you be allowing, you know, single family or single unit dwellings on a rear lot? Why would you only allow middle housing on the rear lot? And that kind of raised the issue to me of, you know, the possibility of this nonconforming situation where we annexed a lot where the house has a deep setback, the single dwelling has a deep setback, and then you put the middle housing in front instead. And then, you know, what does that scenario look like legally? So anyway, the, but I think the, I tend to agree, although, you know, what, normally we would allow it, but it, it should just be a single unit dwelling. But I agree with the policy direction as well, and trying to find some way of making sure that we're creating actual incentives to private investors, you know, helping the city fulfill its policy objectives. And so, you know, that, that means we want more middle housing. And, and so you can do middle housing on this type of a lot, but not a single unit dwelling, you know, is an appropriate way of incentivizing that, I believe. Although I'm, you know, certainly open to hearing what the other commissioners have to say on that as well.
You, you make a valid point, because really what happens is, is that, you know, we have these, they're 70 foot wide by 200 foot deep. The house is generally set back probably 20 to 30 feet, maybe off the street in these larger lots, right? So that, that 20 foot probably makes a big difference to be able to get your square in there. And I guess you would encourage anybody who wanted to split off their lot and have development, you would probably encourage more middle housing than single family dwellings if you only did the 20 foot. But it, it's also, it, it's also market driven at the same point in time, too, of what somebody is going to build or what somebody isn't going to build. And so you, you don't want to get trapped behind the market where now all of a sudden you have zero development of housing because the market has slowed way down and duplexes and quadplexes are not the desirable unit.
I think they haven't been the desirable unit to build, build here in the city of Milwaukee because it's kind of challenging. And so I think that maybe removing the barriers would allow more of them to be developed.
Yeah. My, my point is, is that it's really economical based.
Right. Yes. And I, I agree with you.
The, the intent is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I feel like there's this moment of time where you start to try to see, when you make these changes to the code, the hope is that the market will kind of follow along, right? And that builders that haven't had to build these types of housing because it hasn't been required, or it hasn't been, you know, even an opportunity in a lot of places, that all of a sudden we're creating this opportunity. So maybe the market actually catches up a little bit to what the code is doing. I think that's part of the hope of this code, that we start to kind of change how the economics of it work, that you would have more developers trying to build these types of houses because there's such bigger opportunity to build, build these kinds of houses. At least that's the way I kind of think of it in, in my mind.
So the, the 20 foot in, right, is, is mainly there to have this incentive of your, of your middle housing.
Yep.
And then if we move it for the single house dwelling, then what we're going to end up with is probably more single house dwelling.
Right.
That's the theory now, right? We'll see if it changes over time. Like it might, we don't know what we're going to get over time, right?
I, I, I hear you. But, you know, it, I, I understand your motivation and your logic of the motivation. But it's really all economically driven anyways. So it's what buyers are willing to pay for and what buyers want is what they are going to build. And what I'd hate to see is happen is that the market, you know, slows down. And then you end up with zero development, which doesn't necessarily do anybody any good, except it's just the way that it remains today. And I apologize for those who love it the way that it is today. But, you know.
So I have a hypothetical question here. So if, if we have the situation where we have a flag lot, and the building envelope, or, and so the, the building envelope for the single family, for the single unit dwelling that's proposed, would have to be within 20, or within 30 feet, but not less than 20, right? And so they technically are closer than the prescribed 30 feet for a single unit dwelling right now. But then we're also talking about allowing variances on dimensional standards for flag lots, rather than maybe having them continue to be prohibited. And so it doesn't mean that you can't come in and build a, a single unit dwelling and put it 22 feet away. You just have to go through the variance process to get that variance.
Well, but then that ends up with the same question. Well, are we only going to do variances for middle housing? Or are we going to do variances for all flag lots? Right, I mean, right, we're back to the incentive question.
All new, all new housing is desirable.
Yeah, I think we do for both.
All new housing is desirable and helps us fulfill that housing policy, you know, housing set of policy goals. But obviously, we want to see more and we want to make it easier for the middle housing so that we can get those more affordable units produced. But that doesn't mean that we don't want any new housing. And so I, I think that we probably could relax that prohibition, you know, even for single dwellings. And it's just someone would have to come in. If someone wants to build a single dwelling, you know, within that setback that, or, you know, less, you know, less than 30 feet from the, the front property line or the rear property line, they just have to come to the planning commission and get a type 3 variance approved.
Well, I, yeah, I, I think that that is a, I think that's a totally fair compromise and good way to look at this. That, I, I understand the objective of the, right, trying to get the middle house. So you're going to give them a break by making it easier on these lots. And then, and then if we have a variance process for single family dwelling and for the middle housing units, then I, I think that's, I think that's a fair compromise.
If I, if I could, just for clarification, the variances that are prohibited right now have to do with the lot itself. So it's lot width and lot depth and lot area. Those are the ones that are prohibited. And those are the ones that we circled back and said, no, those are okay, subject to type 3. The setback variances that you're talking about is already permitted as a type 2 variance. And we've issued them.
Oh, yeah.
And there's a mathematical variance. So, so you can reduce right now via type 2, those 30 foot setbacks down to 22.5. And we've done those on, on a couple of places in a couple of occasions. So.
And so, and since we're changing our zoning to basically an R5, right, throughout?
Basically.
Uh, then those standards of the 10,000 square foot lot, you know, in an R10.
Right.
Now have gone away and they're 5,000. So if you have a 10,000 square foot lot, you could split it up in half anyways now, right? Am I following that correctly?
Generally, yeah. Subject to the standards and so.
So it kind of takes away that variance process anyways.
For those, I think what, all I was speaking about was just specifically to flag lots and the setbacks.
Right.
Um, are currently permitted via type 2 variance. That's, I just wanted to make that clear, that those wouldn't be coming to the planning commission. Or at least they don't now. And I don't, it doesn't seem like that's where we're heading. So.
Yeah, I must have misread that. So variances of lot area, lot width, and lot depth standards are prohibited for back lots. And I'm totally cool with those standards being variable.
Great. Okay. Good.
Do we have any other, else any questions here?
I don't think so. I mean, I think, I think the only other one I wanted to just understand was the, if folks have an opinion on using the pole area to be part of the overall minimum lot area calculation or not. So that's, you know.
So just on, on the margin, you're talking about getting an additional unit for a flag lot that absent the pole has, you know, almost 7,000 square feet or almost 5,000 square feet. And the flag pole could count and gets you over that threshold, gets you that extra unit.
Right.
Um, and none of that matters if Commissioner Hema and I get our way and make it where you can put a quadplex on 3,000 square foot lot, right?
Right. Still an outstanding question. We'll, yeah, we'll, we'll be talking about that. But yes, yeah.
Yeah, I, you are taxed, you, you're, as a flag lot owner, you are taxed on your driveway. So it might as well count for something. I said, go ahead and let it be. I, I like the proposal.
Agreed.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no, I have no objections to that whatsoever.
Okay. And then I guess I just wanted to circle back on the idea of allowing back lots in new subdivisions. Currently, flag lots are prohibited in a new subdivision. You can't build a, you can't propose a flag lot within a new subdivision. Should we allow back lots in a new subdivision? I guess to that point, should we be allowing flag lots in the new subdivision? But we were specifically asking about back lots because, you know, again, they're incentivized, you know, to be only for middle housing. So do we want to allow a Cheragino Farms type situation in a new subdivision in the city? I guess is the way I'll phrase that question. What do we think?
I mean, there's not, there's not a whole lot of opportunities, I think. Although there are some, probably. And so I guess, you know, if you're looking at some of those large site redevelopments, you know, within the, the city's UGMA or within the city itself. Would, I guess the problem that really comes into play with this is block size, right? And how big the blocks are, and the connectivity with the blocks. And so I think that as long as you're meeting those connectivity goals, I mean, this is a tough thing to say, too, I think, because, you know, I like the idea, you know, and I mean, and it's not all about me and what I like. But, you know, the, the eyes on the street, you know, the, the policy objectives of having the, the set of standards, you know, the crime prevention through environmental design, sorry, you know, standards where, you know, you, the houses are up close to you, you see what's going on in the street and you have that security. on in the street and you have that sa- security that way, um, you know, that's lost when we do these, um, flag lots and rear lots. And so, um, I think that, um, although I, I don't want to pretend that we can anticipate every scenario, um, I feel like the, that is an important policy objective, you know, um, to try to get houses, you know, closer to the street, uh, in the front. Um, but maybe there's some kind of alleyway design or something, you know, where, you know what I mean? It's like, I, I, again, it's like there's, there's so many different creative ways you could approach subdivision design. But I don't want to rule these out out of hand. I just want to make sure that we're satisfying the important policy objective. And, um, connectivity, pedestrian connectivity is absolutely one of those where we need to make sure the block sizes aren't too large. But, you know, there's, there's a trade-off to not having eyes on the street. And that's an important consideration and, and maybe there should be a couple hurdles to putting flag lots in, in a new subdivision. Maybe you should have to show that you're doing something different, um, that, you know, makes up for not, you know, kind of fulfilling that policy objective. But maybe you're doing something else instead to, to mitigate for that.
Vice Chair Edge, is it all right if I say something? Yeah, I see. Um, so I just wanted to add that I think that flag lots were, basically came about because, um, it was already on pieces of property that had already been developed. Whereas when we're going and doing the subdivisions, I think it's important to figure out what is the right design, not trying to fill in holes, you know, like trying to put in density where density didn't exist. So I would just think, after going and, and looking at things and trying to think about flag lot, is that the kind of development we want in the city? Or do we want it to be, like you said, um, Commissioner Chair, uh, Edge, do we want the eyes on the street? Do we want the frontage on the street? So what are the policy objectives and does flag lots, um, get us there or do they not? So maybe we could come back, we could think about that a little bit and bring back kind of our thoughts on that to the hearing for you all.
Yep.
And, and if we're gonna look at policy, so I look at it this way, um, it seems to me that if we allow back lots, we certainly eliminate a lot of road surface that gets put in. Um, and, uh, so from an environmental, uh, point of view, uh, it seems to me that you would ha- end up with a lot more vegetation and a lot more trees, uh, with the back lots being allowed, uh, than you would, uh, because if you have enough connectivity right on to both sides, where everybody's eyes on the street, those houses would be back-to-back. You'd have to put in a whole nother, uh, road. Um, and so, uh, it seems from an environmental point of view, uh, the less the road surface, the less water runoff, the less, kind of that kind of stuff, i- is, uh, is more desirable. But, but we can, right, this is another one of those things where you look at these two, how do you rate connectivity against the environment or, you know, what policies say that we can, what policy says, you know, and, and so, yeah, maybe a little bit of a deeper dive into that, I guess.
All a series of trade-offs, right?
Right, it's a series of trade-offs.
Get one thing, get less of another, like, so what do we weigh at? What's most important at the end of the day?
And, 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 and if you haven't guessed by now, I am, I, I really, flag lots, back lots, they don't bother me, uh, in one, in one bit at all. So, you know, I understand the eyes on the street, but you're always gonna have those houses in front that are the eyes on the street. And it is weird when you live in a, in a back lot or in a, uh, you know, that you have to make an attempt to get to know your neighbors because you have no idea what goes on in the street. Uh, uh, but, you know, nowadays with cameras, if I wanted to point a camera down my driveway and watch, if I really cared what happened out there, uh, you know, I could, I guess, and watch the footage when I wake up in the morning, but it's just one of those things.
Yeah, and I, um, I guess what I'm thinking of is that if there was some particularly, um, if there was a site that had, you know, some geographic or geological constraints or natural area constraints, you know, it might make sense to have, um, you know, a flag lot or a, a back lot type setup to where you don't, you know, you can get, they can reach their minimum density, um, but not have to put in as much road surface like Commissioner Hemer was saying, in order to, to access all of those, those lots in a normal, you know, grid and maybe, you know, so I, I feel like having it available for a creative approach, um, could be really helpful, um, to be able to do back lots or, or flag lots in a, a new subdivision. Although I agree, it shouldn't perhaps be, you know, kind of the default choice, um, that code, uh, uh, that the code offers.
Okay.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
Now, are we talking just for middle housing, though, right?
For, for back lots, that was the idea.
Only for middle housing, so not single-family dwellings.
Correct, right. At least, that's how we, we pitched it, that yes, that back lots, should back lots be permitted in new subdivision? And again, coming back to, back lots are only permitted for middle housing. So that was, that's, again, a proposal.
I'd honestly be okay if back lots were just basically flag lots with, you know, with the, the easement on the parent lots property. Uh, you know, I, I don't, I know that we, you know, again, we're, we're trying to find ways to incentivize middle housing and we should continue doing that and that should still be part of what we're putting forward. But I would also be okay with a single-unit dwelling on a back lot. Um,
Okay.
You know, again, provided that it's, it's, you know, we feel like it, uh, however we're setting it up, that it's satisfying, you know, our policy objectives. And I've been biting my tongue a lot about, um, you know, in this conversation, because we're not ready to talk about habitat connectivity and wildlife corridors and those other policies that are, will be a forthcoming phase of, uh, compliance implementation. But, um, you know, yeah, it, 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 it pained me as I was talking about screening to not be talking about how, uh, wildlife connectivity and habitat connectivity at the same time. But, you know, we're not, we're not really there yet and I have to, you know, accept that. Um, but, you know, there's a lot of conversations to have around, you know, how these, the impacts of these kinds of dwel- of developments on, um, the habitat connectivity as well. And so, um, I know we'll come back around and have more conversations around these, but I, I still feel like, um, you know, that having, uh, it doesn't need to be limited to middle housing, although middle housing can qualify you for the buyright reduction and setback, um, you know, for instance. But, um, otherwise, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with these types of lots accommodating residences, full stop.
Okay.
I.
Yeah, I can agree with that as well, Com- uh, Chairman Edge.
I, I, I share the same opinion.
Okay, so, so back lots can just be permitted? We're not, they're not solely for middle housing? Is that the direction I'm hearing? Just wanna make sure I have that right? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. But we'll have some of these built-in incentives, you know, the less setbacks and so on for middle housing. But the creation of a back lot is okay regardless of what you're putting on it. Okay?
It, it's a flag lot. The only thing that distinguishes it is the flag pole ownership.
Right, right. So still thirty feet for a single-family residence and twenty feet for a middle housing choice in a back lot.
Okay.
Right?
Also, I like the, the idea of combining the driveways. And I'm wondering if there's an opportunity, um, you know, Commissioner Hemer might feel differently about this, you know, how, living in this type of situation. But just that parent lot can be accessed from the rear, then they can take access from the flag pole instead of, and combining them that way. And then maybe that only really applies, um, if, I mean, I know that we still have situations where, you know, a driveway already exists to a garage that already exists and there's nothing we can do about that. And so the flag pole comes off the side. But, um, for new subdivisions that do this, um, absolutely requiring them to combine these, uh, driveways, um, into as few as possible.
Yep.
Um, would be preferable.
Yeah, that's already written into the code.
Yep.
A- and that, and that's, I would, I would give kudos to the three-G on page eight, which is my little pet peeve, that we do require on the front house or whoever owns the pole, uh, that the person that does not own the pole is required to have a parking spot so that they don't block the driveway.
And they would have to. Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. Make sure of that.
Any other questions for us on, uh, back lots or flag, flag lots, Vera?
I, I have one general question. I don't know if we're at the general question, but can somebody explain what seventeen-point-two-eight-point-seven-zero-seven, the flag lot and back lot limitations means? Because didn't you write it in there that it's gonna be allowed in a subdivision, the very last statement highlighted in yellow? Didn't you already say that it was gonna be, uh, allowed after January first of twenty-twenty-two?
Yep, no, that's, you, I, I missed that reference. So you're right, good catch.
Okay.
Yeah, catch.
If it wasn't highlighted in yellow, I never would have gotten it. So you did have to do it.
Got it, thank you.
We haven't talked about land divisions yet, right, Vera?
No, um, and we can. It's, I mean, there, there aren't a lot of sections. It, um, as far as the Title XVII section, it, um, the Title XVII section that I've done, that was in the code that you received as part of this, um, staff report, was specific to the back lot section. Um, there weren't any other changes to Title XVII that I've proposed as part of this code amendment, um, other than the back lot.
Okay.
Stuff, yeah.
So do you want to talk about the natural resource?
Yeah, we can talk about that, that next. Yes. Um, I only have one slide that has to do with that, actually. Um, let me, oh, figure out. There we go.
Did I miss the natural resource?
Wait, am I still? All right. Am I sharing my screen right now?
Yeah, I think so.
Can everyone see the presentation?
Not yet.
No, that's what I thought. Okay. Okay. So, all right. Okay, let's go.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask a stupid question. Was that not in our packet or was that in the pa- previous packet?
What, the natural resources?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, there aren't, there, it was, the, so the natural resources section, um, was in the, there wasn't any additional thing that went with the staff report. It was in the big mother code amendment package that, um, that you received earlier.
Thank you.
Yeah, no.
I just wanted.
It's a good question, thank you. Yeah, no, um, as far as the natural resources section goes for the code amendments, um, we haven't proposed any substantive amendments. We've made some references to the new tree code throughout, um, and we've made revisions to the habitat conservation area disturbance calculation to make sure that we've included middle housing as part of that, um, mathematical calculation, because that calculation currently is just for, um, single-family or single-unit homes. Um, we do propose a much more substantial review, uh, when we do the sort of overall natural resources review section that, um, Chair Edge just mentioned, um, where we'll be covering the needed housing statute, clear and objective standards for development in the water quality resource area, that two-track process, um, that we've talked about before. Um, we're proposing that that happen within the overall natural resources, um, code section, that part, portion of the implementation. Um, and that's slated right now for twenty-twenty-three, which feels actually really close. I know it sounds like it's really far away. It's actually not that far away. Um, but that's, so that's our pitch. So I don't, I don't know if folks have questions about, you know, the natural resources section, or are there other things that, you know, we ought to be looking at? Um, but that's how we've proposed it for this package of amendments right now.
Have we successfully, um, remedied that issue where the, uh, minimum density can be calculated as greater than the maximum density?
Oh, in the def- in the?
Uh, in natural resource?
Yep, that's a good question. I'm going to go back to that. Yes, um, I'm glad you've asked that question. I'm gonna go back and revisit that, um, tomorrow and make sure that, you know, how we've, how we've proposed that and cover that. Thank you for bringing that up. I looked at it and then I-
It feels related, related enough to housing that we can justify doing it as part of the-
Agreed, agreed. Yep.
Um, and so with that fixed, I think that we actually have, you know, the protection that we need to make sure that we can, you know, uh, forge ahead with, um, you know, middle housing and the natural resources standards that we basically have in place, I think, so.
Yep, agreed, thank you.
I've been hammering on that for a while and I, I feel like, um, if we just remedy that one thing, I think we'll, we'll, we'll be in a good enough spot with it.
No, we'll have that for you and we'll have that in the hearing draft. Yep.
Cool. Any other questions on natural resources?
No, but I, I will-
There are too many questions.
I'm sorry. I, I will always make my statement, I wish that the yellow little lines weren't drawn from a Google map and that we actually went out there and measured them and put them in the right spot where they should be. That's all I have to say. Thank you. I know it won't be part of this.
Is there, um, so I, I just wanna verify the, um, what the, confirm what the city's process is for this, because I, I imagine it has to exist. The county has a process for a habitat conservation area map verification.
Yes.
And it's an application itself where you just go in and define what you see on the ground and how that relates and it, and it updates the maps for the purposes of that site.
Yes. And we have that as well.
The city has something substantially similar, yeah.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Yep, yep. And we've had folks do that, take, take that on, actually, parking lots and that sort of thing. We've had folks come in and, and sort of, and re- and verify the boundary and in fact, change it because of existing development. That's on the ground. Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Okay.
I think we're good then.
All right. Um, and then the only, the, the final thing I wanted to, sorry, I'm gonna go back and change, now let's share the screen again, um, is I just wanted to, while we were on the topic of land division, um, was, there was, um, information in the staff report that provided an overview, um, of Senate Bill four-fifty-eight, um, which is the expedited land division, um, code.
We're seeing your presentation review again.
Ugh, all right. It doesn't matter at this point. Um, the, uh, so Senate Bill-
We can submit if we need to.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, so Senate Bill four-fifty-eight, um, relates directly to, um, Title XVII. So this was signed into law, um, right around Memorial Day, and it has to do with cities applying an expedited land division process to mi- middle, um, housing land divisions. I wanted the commission to be aware of Senate Bill four-fifty-eight, um, and sort of, and what it does, um, and that we, the, we are aware of it. We're still working through what all of it means. DLCD, um, is also working through what all of it means. A lot of us have had, have questions on our monthly Zoom meeting with DLCD about what is this going to, what does this mean for us? Um, a lot of communities have a lot of questions, mostly about what happens with a cottage cluster and kind of, and if someone wants to come in and do a land division for a cottage cluster. So DLCD is still working on guidance. Um, our goal, um, was to incorporate amendments into this package to account for Senate Bill four-fifty-eight, um, but we may have to return to it in the spring because DLCD is still working through kind of what a lot of this stuff means, um, as it relates to the Senate bill. And we need more guidance from DLCD before we know exactly, um, what, what it means. Um, there's, I think what it, it will mean for us is making sure that we have kind of a, I guess we'll call it a type-two process for land divisions of any number of lots. That's really, the idea of an expedited land division is that it compresses the review time. Uh, right now, there is an expedited land division process for affordable housing, like income-restricted housing. Um, and the idea is to use that same process for middle housing. And basically, it, it compresses the review period down to sixty-three days. So, um, we still need to work through kind of how all that, what all that means. Um, there are some specific things that the Senate bill says that we are allowed to ask for or require within a subdivision, um, and some things that we're not allowed to ask for. Um, one of the key examples that I would provide, I would give you is that as part of a land division, the city can't require, um, parking to be on each individual lot that results from the land division. You can still require parking, of course, um, but that parking can be in a parking lot that all of the units share. And then you, you of course can require the easements or whatever to make sure that all of the lots have access to that parking. But as a result of the subdivision, you can't require that the required parking is on each individual lot. That's, that's an example of some of the things that the Senate bills, you know, precludes us from requiring. So we need to go through it more carefully. We're one of many communities that have a lot of questions about how this works. So, um, we will try to incorporate it here, but I think what is more likely is that we will be coming back in the spring with a very targeted set of code amendments that relates specifically to this, so that we're, you know, in line, um, with the, um, June thirtieth- with the June thirtieth deadline for this. So I just wanted to make sure that the commission was generally aware of what this thing is, and that we are too, and we're still figuring it out, as is, as are everyone, as is everyone else, I guess, at this point, so.
As are the rulemakers.
Yes, yeah. So, yeah, we're all still trying to figure it out at this point. And then I'll just hit the last slide, and then I'll stop sharing, and we won't share anymore. And we can just, we can talk about whatever else we need to talk about. I just wanted to include the next steps. So we're still kind of in this process. We've got one more work session scheduled with the commission. And then the hope is that at that point, at the conclusion of that, we will have a refined final draft that we will post for a public hearing in October. Is the goal. We'll see if that's where we, where we end up, but that's, that's our general thought process for now. And with that, I'm going to stop sharing, and we can get out of here. There.
Awesome. Thanks Vera.
Hey, yeah.
So the, um, the SB four fifty-eight, I'm really glad to see that the legislature came back around to deal with land divisions for middle housing, because so many of my questions, so many of my unanswered questions were around land division. So I appreciate that we're getting some clarity there forthcoming. That may offer us some direction, though, on another thing that we had been discussing, which is the possibility of ADUs for middle housing, primary dwellings, and how to, you know, structure that. And so with land divisions kind of spelling out, or with the state spelling out how the land divisions can occur for ownership units, then I think that that's, I think we'll probably get some guidance embedded in that, but also it feels like, maybe, to me, it feels intuitively like maybe we should be looking at attached ADUs being kind of the defining, you know, how do you get an ADU from a, in a duplex or a triplex? Well, you know, each unit, primary unit has an ADU attached to it. And in an ownership model where this land, SB four fifty-eight applies, and you divide out, you know, the land underneath each unit of a triplex or whatever, then the ADU for that primary unit would be on the deed coupled with that primary unit and not able to be removed from it and sold separately or owned separately from the primary unit. So that's, I think, how we could start to add some definition around how you have middle, attached middle housing, you know, dwellings with ADUs.
Yeah, we were talking about that earlier this week.
It looks like the state is advocating for rear lots as well, because they're saying that you can't require frontage on all lots, you know, under these. So it seems like we're doing appropriate things, you know, that we're, our timing is good to deal with a lot of these things.
I hope so. Yes.
The other thing I saw is that when I looked this up, I think on the ORS for this, that it does actually call out that if land committed to a residential use but not necessarily land that's serving other goal-protected, or, you know, other goal-protected lands, so like goal-five, goal-six, goal-seven lands are not subject to these same expedited land division requirements. So, so anyway, it starts to, it seems like the state kind of caught up with some of those concerns that we've been raising, and this seems to address some of those, so I'm happy for that. And if we want to try to foreshadow any of that and get, you know, get that into our code ahead of schedule, it's probably okay. Like, you know, if we wanted to try to figure out, you know, the ADUs for middle housing units or whatever, I think that that's okay to try to get out ahead of, as well as, you know, the backlots. I appreciate Commissioner Sherman's comments around trying to do more outreach around backlots, and, you know, we probably could, particularly in the Arden Mould area. But I also feel like the state's sending a pretty strong signal that we're gonna need to accommodate that type in new land divisions. So we might as well figure out how we're gonna do that and move ahead with it. As well as protecting our other goal-protected lands. Really glad to see that we have the ability, that even if land is already committed to a residential use, that we can still protect the goal-five resources or the goal, even the goal-fifteen resources, but the land at Greenway was on that list.
Yes.
So. So I talked a lot. Anyone else have any comments about land divisions or SB four fifty-eight? Or anything else that we've talked about before we go? Right.
To Commissioner Sherman's comments, plus to what was said at the last meeting, if we could really get an answer to the question, if we change all the residential zones from five, seven, ten to MD, does every house get notification?
We, we've, we talked about this, and we will be providing direct notice in advance of the public hearings to all residential properties in the city. We've already talked about that. Yeah.
And, and I think that will help get to Commissioner Sherman's issue of the back, because you can't just go drive around and pick out, right, what, or I guess you Google it now and say, oh, well, let's talk to these people. But I think that will give everybody the opportunity to be able to speak about it, and then they will give their relative experience from the property that they own. Does, does that make sense? So I'm glad that everybody in the residential area, I don't know if I'm glad, but I'm glad that that got settled out and that was decided. That will help, I guess.
And Commissioner Massey, I saw you raised your hand, too.
Yeah, I'm just kind of thinking through, you know, the public meeting here. And so just sort of a general observation is that we have gone through a really extensive process. Everyone's done a lot of good work on the various committees and the city staff in getting us to this point where we're actually, you know, writing code. I think that as, as we, as we go through, you know, the process and actually start, you know, putting things into code, I think that there's, I won't call them surprises, but there are things that are revealed that we weren't maybe, you know, didn't think about before, you know, you know, the prime example being the, just the number of zones that we're gonna have. And some of the more details about things like flag lots and that kind of thing. And so there's, there's some level of detail, and I'm just wondering if, rather than saying we're having a public meeting and here's seventy-five pages of stuff that we're gonna talk about, is there a way to put together, you know, an executive summary that says, these are the more significant items that are being considered for the code, one, for just clarity, and to elicit participation in the October public hearing?
Yes.
Because there's just a lot of detail here, and, you know, we're swimming, trying to keep up with it. And I think folks who aren't involved in this are, are, you know, are not gonna have a handle on it, but there's certain things we might want to highlight to the public, and I'm just not sure how we do that. I was thinking, well, does the NDA meeting, does that exceed the October public hearing enough so that we could at least get it to the NDA leaders? I, I don't know. I'm just thinking out loud.
No, I think, I think you raise a really good point. I think what we would like to do, we've been using the Engage Milwaukee website as a way of creating, you know, these kind of executive summaries, or sort of one-pagers, I'll call them, sort of summaries. And I think what we, what we could do as, as a suggestion, and I think this is something we'll brainstorm back at the office, too, are the different ways that we can get those executive summary, how do we get that information out? Posted on, you know, on Engage Milwaukee, email blasts, share it with the NDAs, to share with their folks. Our goal is to be, is to go to the NDAs and present, you know, to them when they come back from the summer break. As a reminder, we've been there twice with each of them already. Now we come back when we have our, the public hearing scheduled, and, you know, and again, hit the highlights, right? So hit the, you know, kind of the big picture, the top-ten list of things that we're changing, kind of idea, to get folks sort of back from the summer and back into thinking about the code like we have this whole time. But you, I think you've made a really good point. We don't want to just sort of let people know that here's eighty pages of code for you to go read. I think sort of like a top-ten list or an executive summary is a great idea, and I think that's something we can certainly put together. We've been using that sort of format for a lot of our information already, and so we can certainly do that and make a concerted effort to get that information out there. It's a great, great idea. Yeah, and we will definitely do that.
I'm mute. I'm mute.
Yeah, I'm all for using all of those, you know, communication channels and everything like that, but, you know, we just need to talk it up. You know, at the market and, you know, if we ever have First Friday again and all of those kinds of places, we need to talk to our neighbors and hopefully do some word-of-mouth, sort of, get focus out to the public hearing kind of thing, because not everyone's gonna, you know, go to the Engage Milwaukee website.
Right.
Yeah.
Christian Erd, I see your hand.
Oh, no. I mean, I'm always available to do outreach to the community. So just anything that you want out there, just literally kind of have to put it in front of my face sometimes, and then I can talk to the community about it. So, yeah, I'll help in any way I can.
Just don't email it to her.
Don't email it. So that was, that was actually going to be my question. Commissioner Erd, if email doesn't work because your inbox is totally overwhelmed, and I understand that, what does that mean when you say I need to get it in front of your face? How do I do that? What, what's the mechanism to do that?
I mean, texting me or DMing me is probably the easiest way. I mean, like, that I will see it for sure. But if you, like, in the subtitle or something, just address me very, like, in all caps, that I know it's not like a full blast, like, get my attention and say, can you put this in the group? Then, you know, then I'll be more likely to see it. But if it's like a full blast to everybody, I get a lot of those and I just kind of skim through. But I can, I can also try and have the conversation with the community or, you know, start the conversation, at least the outline of the conversation, and let them also have it about kind of attending this and getting more involved. So you can do that.
All right. I may, I may follow up my email with a phone call.
Gonna say the good old-fashioned.
Telephone works. I'm just gonna do that, too. Okay, great.
Absolutely the most effective way to get a hold of me.
Perfect.
Okay.
And if I could, Chair Andrew, to Commissioner Massey's point, as we all write, we look at through the lens of the way that we see the world, and it does have opinions. So when you put together your executive summary, don't be too generic, because then people, it will just slide right on over them. And I understand not being too specific, but you should give the pros and the cons, kind of the concept. You gotta lay out why we are doing this, because we're told to, right? And then you, and then, and then, you know, be honest with, we've all gone through these pros and cons. And, and then that will probably help people, you know, with their own opinion to be able to maybe want to dig in a little bit further into the information, I guess.
If, if I may, may I, may I use the phrase trade-offs?
Yes.
Instead of pros and cons, that's just, you know, while we're talking about sort of the tone, what we're doing.
You're much, you're much better in the use of government e's.
No, it's, it's, yeah.
Anything else on the comp plan before we move on? Do you feel like you have sufficient information from us, Vera, for what you were hoping for tonight?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Again, great conversations, folks. I really, I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, then we'll move on. The commissioners or staff have any other business or updates?
I just wanted to let everybody know that apparently tonight the city council has gone back. They've decided they are not meeting in person until at least December. We had that brief moment where we opened back up, and it was really exciting, and everybody was really excited. And I think that there's a little bit of weariness, slurriness about that, and so it's going back. So we can have a conversation about this next time, about what the planning commission would like to do. I don't know that we've been given any mandate to meet in person, so we might just want to talk about it next time we meet. Just want to let everybody know.
If I may make a suggestion, why don't we just go ahead and make that decision tonight and just say, you know, we'll go back to Zoom? And hopefully by the time that the public forum for the comp plan comes out, that we can meet in person. And by the way, this is the first planning commission I've had pants on in like the last sixteen years. It's kind of weird.
My first one, I literally was wearing pajama bottoms, my first one ever, and I went to let the dog out.
Exactly. Do any other commissioners have any opinion about that?
No, I agree. I think that it's, we just, it's needed right now. We're not going back into in-person right now.
I guess the safest thing to do, but, you know, ultimately, whatever, whatever the city decides to do, I'm, you know, still full remote, you know, for the foreseeable future. So. You know, if other people feel comfortable with that, then, you know, that's, I defer to others. But I honestly feel the safest and smartest thing that we could do is probably go back to full remote for a while.
Sounds like we've got a little bit of agreement on that, so we will just assume that we're going back to Zoom. Okay, got it. Okay, thank you. That was the only thing I had.
I enjoy the hybrid experiment. I enjoy the hybrid experiment, and I want to continue to refine the hybrid meeting. But.
So do we.
Yeah, and to be honest, if I had a choice of being able to sit at home without pants on and not have to wear a mask, than to be here and, you know, take a shower and put on pants and have to wear a mask, I'd much rather not have to wear the mask, so.
Yeah, the mask.
We'll get there.
Christian Massey?
I want to extend congratulations to Vera and the Canadian women's soccer team. Last week I was cranky that Megan Rapinoe and the ladies team were, were not gonna get to the goal round. So I was cranky, but well done. Well done.
It was a heck of a game. Thank you, Commissioner Massey. Appreciate it.
Any other items for discussion from the commission? Last call. Okay, so meetings. Do I go see your hand? No. Okay, so meeting forecast.
All right, coming up August twenty-fourth, it's comp plan implementation again. We're gonna talk about the tree code and the design and the development standards, so that'd be a really good conversation. September fourteenth is a variance request from Bonaventure Senior Living to not have curvaceous pavement for the walkways. And then on September twenty-eighth, tentatively, not sure this is exactly gonna happen, but we're looking at the development review for Koho Point, which is really exciting for the city. And then one other thing I wanted to mention is October twenty-first is looking like a really good date for the joint planning commission NDA meeting. I've talked to Jason in the, in communications and to look at the calendar, and it looks like right now that looks pretty good. So I'm gonna be communicating out to the neighborhood NDAs this week that that's what we're proposing. And I think what we'll do is, once we've had that meeting, then I want to start having the community involvement advisory committee slot in every agenda for the planning commission. But I want to be sure that the NDAs know what the purpose of that is. So I think it'll be great when we talk about that on October twenty-first. And then starting after that, we'll have a timeframe on each of the planning commission agendas where the planning commission can meet for a few minutes if anyone has things that they want to bring to you as the CIAC. So that's what I'm proposing for now with that. Okay, he's looking at me like he has.
I'm the only one that, I'm the only one she could stare at right in the eye. I'm okay with it, I guess.
Good, good, good. All right, thank you. Good, good, good. All right, thank you.
So I think the city council also established a DEI committee recently. Is that correct?
I believe that's in process. I don't know the details of that, but yes, I believe that is in process.
Yeah, I, I think the applications are gonna be going out here shortly, if I remember the communication correctly.
And I can give
Okay, cool. That's, that's really great to hear.
And I can give a little update about that actually at the next, next meeting. We can just let you know where we are in the process with that. But someone else will do that though, because I'm not here the next two meetings, just so you all are aware. I think I mentioned it last time, but Vera will be here and then Brett will be here for the other meeting.
Okay. We'll enjoy your time away.
Thank you.
And I think I need a motion for us to adjourn unless there's anything else.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion from Commissioner Erd. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Massey and all those in favor? Okay, I raise your hand. All right, unanimous to adjourn. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you. Good night.